Welcome to the Wednesday, February 7th, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 5:11. Can I have a motion, please, to reopen the public meeting? All in favor? Please stand for the. Tonight, we welcome our Horace Greeley students and we are going to welcome them and have the presentation before we move on with our agenda so that they can go home and do their homework. So Dr. Seppi, welcome to the meeting and we'd like to introduce you to share with us our presentation this evening. And I know our students are waiting for us in another location, so we'll head on down there when you are ready.
Good evening, Dr. Ackerman, Board of Education, fellow administrators. Dr. Gamma and I are delighted to be here tonight to present on the vision for the high school and showcase one of our programs, Virtual Enterprise, with Social Studies teacher Zachary Sterns. If you recall, last year, we went into some different learning spaces. We looked at the STEAM Center. We looked at the SRC. We looked at L Building. And how did those spaces change teaching and learning? And tonight, we're going to delve a little more deeply into curriculum and how we are changing curriculum to meet the needs of students in this ever-changing world that so we can prepare our students. This aligns perfectly with our strategic priorities. And perhaps if you think to yourself back to your own high school experience, it might have been very teacher-centered. It might have been a lot of rote memorization, taking final assessments, and then forgetting it the next day. And due to our ever-changing world, we want to prepare students for the 21st century skills they need. So as you listen to the presentation tonight, you want to think about how you hear the words personalized, authentic learning, problem-based learning, students collaborating together. The first area we're going to talk about is mathematics. We are introducing AP Computer Science Principles. And this course is not just for computer programmers, it's for all students. You could be a humanities student. And it helps students understand computer systems, the internet, data literacy, digital literacy. And it gives them the opportunity to examine an area of their own interest, whether it's cybersecurity or perhaps developing their own app in an area of interest. It gives students the chance to be innovative, to be creative, and express that innovation. Keeping along with the STEM theme, we have our ninth-grade science electives, which were developed by our science teachers to really lay the foundation for scientific skills that students will need in the high school. Students have the opportunity to take either life science or physical sciences or a combination of each. Students are going to be in the field acting as scientists. It could be for citizen science where they are looking at nature and then maybe that inspires them towards something in engineering. It could be looking at genetics and understanding how genetics impacts individuals. In the physical sciences, it might be looking at the forces of physics and how does that impact machinery? How do roller coasters work? And then in the last one, looking at waves, which is an area they don't even often get into when they're in AP Physics. And this again looks at tsunamis and natural disasters and plate tectonics. And this was feedback that we gathered from our eighth graders and how they then decided to introduce this into this course. These courses are aligned perfectly with the NGSS standards. Again, making sure that students are gaining the skills to be scientists. And it's going to give students a great opportunity to get into the STEAM Center, to get into the SRC, and use some advanced biogenetics equipment. Moving into the humanities, we're going to be offering AP Capstone, which is two different courses, AP Seminar, AP Research. Students can take one or they can take both. And this is a very similar idea to science research. Students are looking at an area of interest, identifying an investigation, looking at it from multiple perspectives in the humanities, and then presenting on it in a way that they choose, giving them lots of options, lots of individualization, lots of choice. And perhaps in the future, our students will compete in a humanities-type science research program. And we're very excited. We started the application process for Life School. Life School has been undergoing a sort of reflection period so that we could expand the program. And so we've looked at the IB program, which is a globally-recognized program, which really fosters individual curiosity and develops the whole child. And the career-related program is one of the IB programs. And we thought this was perfect for Life School because it gives students the best of both worlds. They can look at career opportunities and learn those career skills along with taking some higher-level college courses. It also helps to foster international-mindedness and really, again, develop and look at the whole child. And students will be able to choose their own career interest. Do they want to go into theater courses? Do they want to go into entrepreneurship? Do they want to use the podcast studio for new media? Or do they want to explore an internship outside of the high school? It really gives students the opportunity to do what they really want to do. So then when they graduate Horace Greeley High School, they are college-ready and they are career-ready. And with that, I'm going to have Dr. Gamma come up and he's going to talk a little bit further about Virtual Enterprise and what you're going to see tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Seppi. I'm excited to talk to you about an experience with you, our Virtual Enterprise course at Horace Greeley. We were first introduced to Virtual Enterprise through our work with the CSF Innovation Committee, which has been focusing on really reimagining some of our classroom spaces. While researching other strong business programs, our students had the opportunity to see Virtual Enterprise in action. And they were drawn to it immediately. In fact, a small group of students within this committee met with Dr. Seppi in her office and made a pitch to bring VE to Horace Greeley. So what is Virtual Enterprise or VE, as you'll hear our students refer to it tonight? You often hear that you learn best by doing, right? In Virtual Enterprise, our students learn how to run a business by essentially running a business. And VE supports and engages our students in this work through the various competitions, trade shows, and even matching business mentors with each class. When you enter a Virtual Enterprise class, the classroom becomes a work environment and the class becomes a business. They do everything in this class from HR to salesmanship. And when you think of a modern workplace, many of the day-to-day tasks can be replicated by artificial intelligence. But what Virtual Enterprise does is that it teaches our students the skills that AI simply cannot foster. For example, the interpersonal skills needed to be able to manage deadlines, to network, to even make a sales pitch. But perhaps the most unique aspect of Virtual Enterprise is the vast national network with over 16,000 students spread across 18 states that participate in this program each year. And it's important to note, because this actually is a real point of pride for our students who are participating in this program this year, Horace Greeley is actually the first VE program in Westchester County. So we're in our first year and it's been a success. We actually have two companies that are up and running. We have Penn Tech and we have Castaway, both of which you're going to meet in a little while over in our iLab. And they've had an opportunity to participate in various virtual and in-person competitions, including most recently at Long Island University, where our company Penn Tech is actually recognized for having one of the strongest websites of all the schools that were part of the competition. So I hope this gave you just a little bit of a glimpse of what Virtual Enterprise is all about. And now we're going to have a chance to experience it. So I'm going to ask one of our assistant principals, Ms. Almo's going to come up. She's actually going to give each of you two cards. One is your group assignment. We have a group A and we have a group B. When we go over to the iLab, Mr. Sterns, our Virtual Enterprise teacher, is going to talk to you a little bit about what you're going to be experiencing. But this is essentially your schedule. The other card is a Virtual Enterprise credit card that he's also going to talk a little bit more about. So once you have your materials, we're going to actually have assistant principals join each group. Dr. Sullivan is going to join group A and Ms. Flores is going to join group B. And we're going to head over to the iLab.
And we'd like to invite our audience, if they'd like to join us in the iLab, you're welcome to do that. So we're going to head over there right now. So thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Zach Sterns. I am a social studies teacher here at Horace Greeley. And I am extremely proud to introduce our two Virtual Enterprise firms, Castaway. I also would like to thank the board and CSD on behalf of Penn Tech for signing an out-of-network contract earlier this year. It really helped the firm get up off the ground and running. I'm excited to see where they've taken it, for you to see where they've taken it since then. And we're thankful to have you as a partner. So one of the most unique aspects of Virtual Enterprise is just how grounded and experiential learning it truly is. So we decided that you need to learn about Virtual Enterprise by experiencing Virtual Enterprise yourself. So what you're going to see tonight are simulations of two of the events that we recently took part in at Long Island University. In this space, Penn Tech is going to present their business plan. We ask that you listen and learn and offer feedback using the Virtual Enterprise rubric, which we will provide you with. This is going to help them to improve their performance for future competitions. It'll give you a good idea of what the company is up to. In the open tables phase for that way, both Penn Tech and Castaway are going to be hosting a mini-trade show. This will be an opportunity for you to hear sales pitches, view the various products they've created, see some sales and marketing materials, and most importantly, you're going to get the opportunity to shop. So you've each been provided with Virtual Enterprise credit cards loaded with $5,000 for you to spend tonight. I'm sure the students are going to try to get you to max those things out. So you've been split into two groups. So group A, you're going to go over to the trade show first. And group B, you're going to stay here for the business plan presentation. After about 10 minutes, we're going to give you a signal and you'll rotate so that everybody will get a chance to see both the events. I hope that you get a really good sense of what Virtual Enterprise is up to and kind of how it's a different program than a lot of other classes. And most importantly, I hope that you have some fun. Thank you. All right, class, please take out your pens so we can begin the test. Oh my God! It's every problems like these that Penn Tech solves. Hi everyone, I'm Adam Hugaholly. I'm CEO of Penn Tech.
Hi, I'm Chloe Ning. I'm the Chief Marketing Officer.
Hi, Luke Keed. I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Hi, I'm Sophia Vannov, the Chief Human Research Officer.
Hi, my name is Sean Ballmey.
Students are often overwhelmed with the sheer amount of things that they have to bring to class, like pens, pencils, highlighters, markers, the list goes on. And parents will often spend $900 on back-to-school supplies for their students. And these are often tacky. They're brittle. They don't last very long. And that often ends up in the 1.6 billion plastic pens that end up in the land. Now here at Penn Tech, we have a solution, the Everything Pen. All right, so instead of getting a pencil case with dozens of different pens, pencils, highlighters, sharpies, try to shuffle through whenever you need to take out a writing tool, we created Everything Pen. This is done with a pencil, eraser, multiple ink colors, Sharpie, and workers' highlighter, as well as a pair of flashlights. So if you're writing at night, which most of us high schoolers are doing these days, it makes it very convenient at night. So it's an all-in-one designed to be very accessible and very versatile. Penn Tech was founded here at Horace Greeley High School in September 2003. And we have 21 employees in seven different classes right now. And Penn Tech's goal is to transform that dull writing experience into something that students look forward to, something that's personal to them and something that can enrich the efficiency when students are writing, crafting a fun, entertaining experience that oftentimes don't provide. And we strive to cater to students of all ages, all demographics, and offer pens with practical functionality that can enrich students' writing experiences across the country.
So a little bit about our structure here at Penn Tech. We have four departments, human resources, sales, marketing, and finance. And while our structure is very clearly defined, we do encourage constant communication and collaboration across all departments. We constantly are challenging to determine how tasks should be distributed amongst the entire. So one of our favorite traditions here at Penn Tech is our employee development award. This is to recognize exemplary employee that has gone above and beyond. We think this really helps encourage students to continue to continue to improve and think of more innovative, creative ways to market our product, sell our product. And this also helps be more.
Okay.
I know, I know Penn Tech does not work.
Initially, when we released our Everything Pen, we sold the pen at less than $50. However, after conducting marketing research, we saw that many Virtual Enterprise companies are actually selling their products at way over $1,000. For example, we saw a company that was selling cupcakes for like almost $2,000. So we saw that we have the space to increase our revenue. Now, in terms of placement, you can find all of our products on our award-winning website. Recently, we received a gold medal for our Penn Tech website at the Long Island Regional Competition. And secondly, in terms of promotion, our sales team does an excellent job in sending buy weekly promotions. This is to target the Virtual Enterprise students, send them promotion codes, and really engage them. So let's look at some of our pens. So after creating the Everything Pen, we designed another line of pens to really cater to the various interests Gen Z and a lot of high schoolers have. You'll see that we have things like the Party Pen, for people who love to party. The Hole-in-One Pen, for students who love to golf. The Penchman Franklin, this is really for our business executives to have that luxurious historical leadership feel to the pen and the shoe pen. Like to collect shoes. We also released limited edition pens. This is to really improve our customer loyalty. Over the holidays, we released the Santa Scribbler, and this was available throughout the month of December to early January. And now we're releasing Cupid's Quill for Valentine's Day, which is coming up.
Our initial goal is to just simply survive the rigorous writing market throughout the United States. However, as we can see, we offer the domestic market here in the United States. And this is encouraging us to expand our company into the international market. And so we can see the exact thing and possibly even more success than we could be. So in regards to our funding, we received a total of $350,000, 47 of which was from the out-of-network contract that we secured with the Jeff Wester School Drift. We also received $50,000 in seed funding, as well as $100,000 from the angel investors, which were teachers that we pitched to get into, and they took a stake in our company. So the average selling price of our pen is $551, which, again, is because of the inflated Virtual Enterprise market. And with a production cost of $3.78, we have an average market of 23%. And based on our big costs and profits, we found that we would break even after seven, eight sales, and we did break even in November. So Penn Tech opts for equity-based funding, again, just so that we can expand the Penn Tech line and have more people involved in our success. Also, we have made to date $215,000 from direct consumer sales from our award-winning website. And that was on miscellaneous days when we weren't doing any special promotions. Again, $134,000 was secured with each of those push promotions. And our projected revenue by June 24 is $492,000. And after our first trade show within the Midwestern region, we beat our projects in quite over 24 times. So Penn Tech is always looking to grow in the future. We hope to expand our target market as we've made contracts with school districts like Chappaqua Central School District. We hope to expand that to the Flugee Sector now. And we also have to, we've also implemented a subscription service in which our most loyal customers can pay a certain fee and then get a limited edition pen each month so they can keep coming back and you can retain some customer loyalty. And we've also implemented, due to our pretty inflated market prices, we've implemented a philanthropic aspect to our company called the Pen Pod Mission. In order for one, every one Everything Pen brought, we donated a box of writing utensils to an underserved school. Now, we also to secure more contracts with a big box, stationary retail stores like Staples or Office Depot, so we can get Penn Tech pens and that Penn Tech writing experience in the hands of more high schoolers and prostitutes across the country. Thank you guys for listening and you guys for contacting us. And yeah, we'll definitely have to take any questions.
So let's say that students, ability high schools, you know, like library, how, is there any sort of like your analytics policy for your $100 pen? Where it gets to it, Mike, you know, it left in a, on a desk or drop out of the back.
I think that, well, I think you referred to our Everything Pen over here. That's a good policy that we haven't really implemented just yet, but the Everything Pen is designed and whatnot is very distinct. And it's a lot larger than the average pen. So I think that it does stand out to a high school when you're just carrying in the backpack for everyday use. It does stand out in an accessory. It also has a flashlight, not a distinct feature that you can see when you're writing or a specific product. So I think they're hard to lose, but that's a good idea. You lose your, telling you just more and more pens and other tools. When you have a case, a pencil case with thousands of different writing tools, however, it would reach not one. So it could be stored in one spot that you never need to stick out or.
There are those people over there.
Thank you.
No, I've spent like all my money. Again, it's not good. Thank you. You want to? The greatest.
They're proud of their senior. Saturday.
So instead of.
We were around the school and talking to kids, seeing what they want in their pens. There's a lot of ideas that they liked and what they wanted to see come into life. Yeah, my personal recommendation.
Is there a product in there? I know. Well, there's a, we have one competitor called, they don't relax as much, so it's easy to do. And, you know, they have things cheaper to hold, they're quaintish. We actually use the outsourced work, like, to make our products. So they like to be cheaply and so.
Has to get them to, they go, it can make you.
Nice logo, actually.
Yes. Oh wait, just. It's that.
it's that great.
Last thing regarding particularly in the tech industry that has gone abandoned over the past few years. Looking to this industry because you know that we're in the market, are we looking for innovative products? And all of our Pentec products are
So here at Pentec, we offer unique, one of the kind of pens that can't be seen in the real world or can't be seen in the virtual enterprise market as well. And while our products are essential products, uh they do enhance student's efficiency within writing and students come back and buy our pens constantly, which we've seen and represented throughout our sales. Uh and this Pentec, the novel Pentec experience uh throughout our writing is something that other firms like Big or big stationary manufacturers like BIC, uh can just math these pens that are fretted, they they're easy to lose. They don't last very long. This is where Pentec has an edge over those companies and this is what's going to allow us to grow into a larger manufacturer, putting these pens in the hands of more students across the globe. Hopefully making them more uh enjoyed, enjoyable, uh hopefully making a more enjoyable writing experience for them and making them just like
So Pentec strives to be the best. We we compare ourselves to both manufacturers in the real world as well as the virtual enterprise world. And we found that in comparison, uh in comparison to advancing another virtual enterprise uh firm, they can provide a more entertaining experience with our different headlines. And as compared to BIC, a very famous large-scale manufacturer, uh we provide a multi-visual design that they don't have in any of their products. And we operate a more entertaining experience. So we, here at Pentec, truly believe that our pens are the best.
All of Pentec's products are designed to be luxurious. Now, what does this mean in terms of pricing? Well, our price range goes from eighty dollars, which is our shoe pen, to one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is our Benjamin Franklin. Now, at first, the price range might seem a bit high, but when we first released the Everything Pen back in November, we released it at well over three hundred fifty dollars. And after conducting a lot of market research, we saw that many virtual enterprise companies are charging their products for really high prices. For example, we saw a company sell cupcakes for over one thousand dollars. So we felt that it was fair to increase our price. In terms of placement, you can find all of Pentec's pens on our award-winning website. We recently just received the gold medal at the Long Island Region Tournament for our website. And in terms of promotion, our sales team does an excellent job extending five, we extend to various virtual enterprise schools with promotion codes and this power ready to market to market. So let's take a look at some of the pens Pentec sold. So after creating the Everything You Can, we expand our pen collection to the original one. These pens are really designed to cater to the various interests of high school and virtual enterprise students. For example, we have the party pen for your everyday person who loves to go to parties. The whole of one pen for students who love to go. The Benjamin Franklin for our business executives who want that leadership, business executive feel. And lastly, the shoe pen for students who like to collect shoes. We also released limited edition pens. This past holidays, we even released the Santa Scribbler from December to early January. And this month, we're releasing Cupid's Quill for Valentine's Day, which is next week. The purpose of limited edition pens are to really increase consumer engagement and loyalty with our brand.
Our initial goal was just to survive the rigorous fighting market throughout the United States. Uh our record just three, four, five, six months in the United States market. We found we were unable to conquer the market of the United States until we came uh right. So that, this is very difficult to expand our power company internationally. And as we hope, as we just conquered the domestic market, we hope to uh conquer international markets.
So as Pentec, we received a total funding of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um one hundred thirty-four thousand of which was from the out of network contract we secured with Chaposa Central School District. Thank you, Mr. Blom. We also received fifty thousand dollars in seed funding, as well as a hundred thousand dollars from angel investors that gave us fifty thousand dollars each for a stake in company. Also, with the selling price of, average selling price of five hundred fifty-one dollars and a cost of three dollars and seventy cents, we have an average margin of twenty-three hundred percent. And based on our profit margins and our uh fixed costs, we were expected to break even in in seventy-eight purchases, which we acquired in mid-November. So Pentec offers equity-based funding so that we can spread the wealth of Pentec and the success of Pentec rather than have loans that we have to pay off. Uh we have to date made two hundred fifty thousand dollars from direct consumer sales from our award-winning website, which was just miscellaneous purchases that weren't specially marketed. Uh we received the hundred thirty-four thousand dollars from Chaposa Central School District. And our projected revenue by June is four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. After our first trade show with the Midwest region, we beat our projects to over twenty-four times.
So in the future, Pentec is always looking to grow. Obviously, we made a contract with Chaposa Central Student District, but we're also looking to uh grow our target market into the future sector, looking at making those in high school uh certain colleges. And Pentec has also uh implemented a subscription service in which our most loyal customers, who fund with our pens, can actually pay a certain fee and get a limited edition pen for each month. And due to our insane margins, we also implemented a philanthropic initiative for the company called the Pen Pod Mission, for which every one, everything can be bought. Uh we donated a box of writing utensils to an underserved school. Now, Pentec also hopes to secure more contracts with big uh block stationary stores like Office Depot and Staples. So we can get our Pentec pens in the hands of more students across the globe and expand our brand and give them that Pentec novel writing experience. So you guys can contact us over here and thank you guys for listening and we have to take any questions.
This is so clever. So clever.
So you're, for every pen bought, then you go out and take a box of
So for every, so for every
Then you're contributing to the
No, no, no. So for every, everything pen bought, we donate a box of our basic pen, which is still No, no, not the pen part. It's just a, it's a baseline pen.
What's the durability on this? Like, like what selection?
It could be, for example, a pencil. That can last maybe four hours without having to sharpen it. They can lengthen it, shorten as you sharpen it, it's lasting days. Hour over pen are made to last years.
So well done. This is so well done. It it's so tough. It's so clever. I think we're gonna stay back in here and do a Q and A, right? Doctor Seppi, we'll stay in here and do the Q and A. I loved the whole demonstration in the beginning with the pen from the floor. That was great. The whole thing was great.
Everyone, we are now announcing the winners of the raffle. So So raffle tickets out. If you bought Alright, we're getting one more ticket out. Castaway travel package, Google Drive blocks, um three pallets because we're sending ten backpacks to kids in Ghana.
Oh, great.
Um also Delta X passenger plane tickets. We're very excited. Anywhere in America.
Also group activity.
We will meet. First number is five. Eight. Four. Five. Four. We have a winner.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Castaway.
Okay, so this is, well, that was amazing. Thank you very much for sharing us with us your, your products. And at this point, like, the board probably has some questions they wanna ask, so um
Very impressive both of you guys. You're remarkable. My question is this, I feel like you're all so secure in the roles that you sort of took on. You screened Vice President of Sales. How did you guys decide? Did you have an interview process? Both companies, I sort of wanna know like how you became the CEO.
So we did have an extensive interview process with a lot of the administration. We had to hand in resumes and everything. They interviewed us for about thirty minutes, so it was a pretty extensive interview. And each position, you could sign up if you wanted to be part of this position and every person was interviewed.
So you didn't just say like
For all of the individual positions, the CEO and the teacher of the class went in with each student that wanted the position. And we did a ten-minute to interview with them. So
And did you guys fall into that role, like you knew what an HR director does? Or did you have to sort of research that and sort of back test what that position looks like?
Well, to be honest with this part, I wasn't really sure if I wanted to be in HR. Thank you. As I'm falling into this role, I'm really, I'm given a new appreciation. I think it's an interesting one to look at.
That would have been now something that you'd uh professionally enjoy. Yeah, it's very cool.
Uh we also, we have like a planning document. So when we were in these interviews, we could write down like what we liked about them. We also had like a set of questions that we wrote beforehand, but asked about.
So how, did any of you go into this? I'm thinking a lot of you were interested in business. But were there any of you that were not sure about business? And was not that interested, but thought, okay, my friend's doing this. I'm kind of interested. I wanna know more about it. So I'm doing it. Nobody? So every, okay.
Yeah, so I'm uh I'm a senior, like really, and I was initially focusing on bioengineering because that was gonna be my major. Uh but I was thinking of pursuing a business minor and taking this class was like more solidifying of if I actually wanted to. And becoming like the CFO of the company, I learned more about like the financials of the company and it really reaffirmed my decision.
It's gonna be nice to see it.
I'm largely wondering how you guys got Delphic to actually write you back, but beyond that, I am I'm curious, you obviously learned a lot about business practices through this experience and this ongoing experience. I'm curious, what do you think you've learned that you'll take beyond the business realm, to other fields or other experiences?
Um for the marketing team, we've done so much work with Photoshop and actually marketing design that's helped me like so much. And there's a variety of fields like to apply that to. And I definitely think we got so much like year skills learned from this that like even in a marketing class, I think you get this level of actual marketing skills.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, just for leadership positions as well, Jared and I, we learned a lot from managing a company at first, honestly, the company was Different positions that in any experience with the design was completely off, you know, every single person was really did not know what they're doing. So it was up to us and all the other heads of each department to manage everyone and to find exactly what positions that they should be in. Yeah, thank you.
I just wanna say, we were never in channels.
I guess
Jared, yes.
Yeah, so um I was very fortunate enough to be on the committee to bring this class to school last year. So I I like knew a lot about it beforehand. I'm also working to get it more of what Shuster's moved right now. But something I've learned throughout my D experiences, the learning by doing. And I know currently we're implementing a lot of courses that do that, but I can't even explain like how this class has like affected like every single person who's taken it. I just, everyone falls into like the right role. And I think everyone would agree that like they've expanded their communication skills. They've expanded like how they integrate and like how they like design things, which is like prototyping and stuff like that. And it's just like so like real. And it like, we'll be, we'll be able to like apply it like so well. And it's like, any class, any like department in this class, like doesn't even compare to like a business class. Because you're literally like doing, you're learning like on air. It's it's very, it's very
I just wanna say, unlike a math class where you have an assignment or a certain like questions to do and submit that by the end of the day, this class is something where you just, you realize, you you think about, oh, I need to make a version. Or I need to make it sad, or I need to send emails. And then you work with your team on different ways to address these uh things that you need to do. So it's like, it 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 has a lot of good pressure on us in the sense that it it makes us really learn how to find what to do instead of being told what to do and then going about finding different ways to go about doing it.
I would also like to say that as someone who is leading the marketing department at the start of the year, we did actually face a big challenge during, had to essentially create a new website in the span of like one or maybe two weeks. Um we worked really hard on the original website, um but we had to change it into a Google site and then end up going into Canvas. So we basically redid the website three times. I feel like that experience of working together as a team with the time pressure really taught me at least in particular on how to work under pressure and how to basically find creative solutions and problems.
And you just
I feel like you're able to work really well as a team and obviously the outcome was great because we ended up winning a gold medal at our website competition. So it was a good experience overall.
I would have to think of virtual enterprise itself of like, like one big case study in the sense where there's something as like you can't get more collaborative in the business environment like within virtual enterprise. And collaboration, I think, is probably one of the most essential skills that you need to take for college and in the professional world after that. So being able to, as CEO, see where people's strengths lie, where people's weaknesses lie, how to play to people's strengths, how can they learn from other people who have, don't have the strengths that they have? Being just be in sort of collaborative environment, which you don't get from regular classes with the school, with the extreme values of me and
Yeah, I don't know how we've done this, uh how we haven't done this yet, but Mr. Stern's definitely stepped up like big time, taking it with his Comes to work every day and just like understands.
I, not really a question, but I was just gonna say that hearing you guys talk and and seeing what you've accomplished here, it's really amazing. And I took a lot of business classes in college myself and um took an entrepreneurship class. I took a class where you did a lot of the case studies of other corporate operations and you learned what they had done wrong. And you sort of dissected where other companies had gone wrong. And it feels like you guys got a whirlwind of all of that in one, in one class. And so I just wanted to recognize that that is a really exciting thing to have done in high school. Um and it sounds like we're on the cutting edge of that as far as high schools in the area go. Uh so it's really exciting to see that happening here. And I think that another thing you can take away from this is just having seen all the different roles of a company, you can see how all the different all the different positions are really important and integral to the success of the entire company. Even if you're not the CEO or the person who's getting all the acclaim and the press, all the other people who are working at that company um have a lot to do with the company's success as well. And that, whatever company you work for in the future, whether it's your own or or a corporation that already exists, you know, you'll find that role and be pivotal in that, in that job as well. So it's great to get a taste of that now. So congratulations to all you guys and it's really been awesome to watch you.
I was just gonna ask, so going forward, like so before the year, I hope that you'll think about the other classes you're taking. And how we could maybe use some of the energy and spirit that was clear and visible tonight into some other parts of really. So if you have ideas like that, I I would like to share them with the staff, with us.
So if you have ideas like that, I, I would like to share them with the staff, with us, with, you know, just your fellow students. Because I think it's pretty evident that you can create a really authentic experience, and you like that a lot out of it. And so like it does a way to propagate more of that, even if it's not in a business context, but in the other part of the day.
Right.
You guys will have like firsthand experience to talk about that in a really good place.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Steffi and her team and your teachers and all of you and your parents for allowing me to be here tonight. It was amazing. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We are back. That was super cool. Um, I hope that if you weren't able to follow us into the iLab that, you get some information about this class because this was pretty amazing and our kids were super impressive as they always are. Um, so I think I'm up now, uh, for the president's report, so I'll do that. Um, good evening. It's February and there was still a smidge of light after five PM. Also, the groundhog has said we'll have an early spring, so I'm feeling cautiously optimistic about that, very cautiously. Um, I hate feeling like I'm rushing time, but this is definitely the point of the year when I am completely over winter. And I was just sold two very exciting suitcases in the next room. So, you know, I'm all set. Um, so speaking of time, we're well into the second semester now, and tonight is the last of our school-based presentations for the year. And they've been so much fun this year to get to have some insight into what our incredible teachers and students are doing in our classrooms. Um, in alignment with our strategic planning and it's, it's just always, there's a lot about our job that's very important, but not as fun. And that's the really fun part, and we love getting to see what's happening in our classrooms and in our schools. Um, so thank you to our Greeley students for joining us tonight and for, for their parents. Um, it's always fun for us to learn with and from you. It makes this work so much more fulfilling to get a glimpse into the teachers and leaders that we're sending out into the world, and it's very clear that these kids are ready to go out and be teachers and leaders in our world. Um, we hosted the first of our two scheduled board coffees this afternoon. As we said before, this is just a different format for us to try to open communication with the community. We know these times were not ideal for everyone. We're playing with times and formats over the course of this year to try to find what's best and may end up with a little of this and a little of that over the year to hopefully be able to accommodate everybody who wants to come in some format. Please know that you can still always reach out to us by email or phone to discuss something or ask a question. Um, we're getting very understandably a lot of questions and feedback on the budget overview. We tried to address some of that with people who came to discuss it at the coffee today and ask that if you do have questions and or concerns, that you please take the time to watch the budget presentations that will begin in March. We hope and think they will answer a lot of the questions people have and address a number of the concerns and give you the information you need to draw conclusions. Obviously, you can always come and attend our meetings. They are also livestreamed, and we get the recordings up as soon as possible, generally within about forty-eight hours. So we hope everyone in the community will avail themselves of that information and then give us your feedback. So winter break begins next Friday, and now I got my suitcases. We hope that everyone has a fun and relaxing winter break with your families. New Lunar New Year also begins this Saturday. We want to wish all of our families celebrating a wonderful holiday and a healthy and happy new year. This is the beginning of the Year of the Dragon. The dragon is considered an auspicious and extraordinary creature with many talents symbolizing honor, luck, and success, and bringing in a year of opportunity, change, and challenges. Hopefully, the opportunities are many, the change is positive, and the challenges are opportunities for growth. So that's all I've got. I'll turn it over to Dr. Akervit.
Great. Thank you, Hillary. And if, um, could just pull up my presentation, the update? Just want to talk about, uh, RFP that we will be putting out for public consideration in the next month. So in our strategic priorities, we've identified five areas that we're looking at, um, in terms of moving forward. And part of, two of the, the important, um, considerations involve our elementary and middle school programs. So I, in, in terms of this, this is a slide that the community has seen before. Um, in our areas of study, we are going to be looking at the demographic boundaries of our elementary schools um, as a way to address some of the concerns that families have been sharing with us around class size and whether or not it makes sense for us to consider redistricting. And so when a district is going to look at that, they normally have an outside agency conduct an extensive study. So, um, part of what we are moving forward is we are going to begin that process. And, um, to do that, we have to solicit experts to, um, engage in, in a potential contract with. So we are, are, are going to start to, um, begin that solicitation process. And we are also going to have a study done regarding our middle schools to determine if it would make sense for us to move into the Princeton Plan. And what that means is that our fifth and sixth graders would potentially be in one building, and our seventh and eighth graders would potentially be in another building. And so to make that decision, you again have to, districts often have an outside agency come in and do an extensive study and then present their recommendations to the Board of Education. So we're in a way beginning, um, phase of this work, and right now it's just a question. Is this something that we should seriously be considering? And in order to gather that information, we're going to create an RFP so that we can look at different companies who are experts around these particular issues to potentially contract with to begin that engagement process for the district. And this is going to take a while. This is not going to be something that, uh, we, we hire someone to do the work, and then we're going to be changing something for September. That is not the case. It would be something we'd be discussing all throughout next year and would be a multi-year plan if we were to make any changes to begin with. But, um, the Strategic Planning Committee felt like this is very important for us to do a deep dive into as we plan for the future of this district. And so that's where we are. So we're gonna, um, we have a draft RFP, our, our, RFP that has been, um, sent to the Board of Education. We plan to post it and do our legal process in February. And then, um, our submission date will probably be at the end of March, and then the board will conduct interviews and potentially select, um, an organization to move forward to begin the study. So I just wanted to, um, share that with the community. We are starting that process right now. And then I, I asked Adam if he can talk, uh, and share with the board just where we are with eighth grade course selection for next year. And so I'm going to turn it over to Adam, and he's also going to talk about the.
So, so we're in course selection season across the district, having meetings with, you know, students and parents that are transitioning. I know Greeley recently had an incoming ninth grade meeting to talk about the options that they have. I did want to highlight for eighth grade that, um, as we did last year, um, students are gonna have, we're gonna have science choices and math choices, and you can see the same choices as last year. Um, science choices will be living environment and science eight. We're going to recommend that students take living environment. But if they are, they and their parents are choosing to opt out of that and into science eight, that'll be an option. We need at least ten students to run that course, but assuming we can get ten or more, we'll certainly run it. Um, you can see the math choices there as well, same as last year. Um, three different math choices, enriched algebra. They're kind of in, in order of rigor, enriched algebra is the most rigorous of the three, and then algebra um, and extended algebra. We're going to recommend students either for algebra or enriched algebra last year. Um, and this coming year, we won't recommend students into extended algebra, but it is an option for students should they choose to take that course. Um, the ones with the asterisks, the three with the asterisks, um, successful completion of those will give the student a high school credit in that course. Um, on the right side, you can see the timeline. On February twenty-seventh, we're going to send out a letter to um, parents who have seventh graders currently that are moving into eighth grade. Um, and that letter will describe these different courses and have some links to resources that they can explore. March fifteenth, we're going to send a letter, um, with a link to, um, the parent portal, which will have the recommendations. Um, so parents will get to see what the teachers are recommending for their children. Um, and then between March fifteenth and March twenty-second, we kind of have this consultation period. So if parents have questions, they'd like to reach out to the teacher to discuss the recommendation or counselor or administrator. Um, they can do that between those, you know, in between those dates. Um, ultimately, it is up to the parent and the student to make the choice, so they can override the recommendation and, and opt into the course that they choose. Um, and then that waiver will be due on the twenty-second. So if they get the recommendations and, and parents and students are comfortable with what's recommended, they don't have to take any action. But if they'd like to move up a level, down a level, choose a different course, then they'd fill out that waiver, and all of the waivers will be granted. It's really a kind of an opt-in, opt-out type program. So, um, that's the course selection process. All right, changing gears completely. On your agenda, you're going to see five point five and five point nine are two different grants. One from Haris Greeley High School, written by Mary Devane, and the second is Seven Bridges, written by Lori Lichtenstein. Um, the high school for several years now has done an in-school field trip. It takes an entire day. It's called Night in a Day. Um, and they read the novel Night. Um, and Mary Devane wrote a grant for really some concessions and refreshments for the students because it's like an in, in-school field trip experience where they, um, students spend time, they basically read the entire novel, have readers of the novel. Um, we have a Holocaust survivor presentation during that day. It's kind of like a interdisciplinary English and tenth grade social studies experience, and all tenth graders participate. So, um, they wrote a grant and got four hundred dollars from, um, the Holocaust and Human, Human Rights Education Center. So that was granted to Greeley. You'll see that on the agenda. And then on the right side, um, Seven Bridges also applied. The Enough Junior Club applied for the same grant and also got four hundred dollars. Um, they're going to use the money to buy T-shirts, um, that say, "We Walked," and they, they're planning an event as part of one of our Unity Days, um, to, you know, raise awareness and education around antisemitism and Islamophobia. So, um, thanks to the Holocaust and Human Rights Education Center and certainly, um, Lori Lichtenstein and Mary Devane for writing those grants, and as well as all the students that are involved in those events.
Now, Andrew Crisilla is going to talk about our Unity Day speakers that we have scheduled.
There we go. Thank you.
Um. Sorry, moving back.
If we go back. Okay, so we have, uh, I, I think, a, a, a great series of events planned for the district. We got some really, uh, good feedback from previous Unity Days where we did a mix of in-person and online events. Often the online events would end up for the younger students, and we moved in-person for the high school students. And, uh, we've made an effort here where every single, uh, presentation and experience for kids are going to be in-person on April eleventh and twelfth. So, uh, going back to the same, uh, um, organization that brought us, um, Ken Wadake Jr., who spoke to our seventh through, uh, twelfth graders. Uh, we are going to have presentations for fifth through, uh, twelfth grade, uh, by what's called the Bridge Project. There's these, uh, two speakers, Kane Smiggo and CJ Suit, who are, um, CJ is a, a poet and educator. He's the poet laureate of Chapel, Chapel Hill. And, um, C, uh, Kane is a spoken word poet, international performer and musician. They're childhood friends. They put together a thing called the Bridges Program where it's about speaking across lines of difference, experiencing each other's culture. They tell their stories, they infuse poetry and music into it. They will also, although I think in our format, there'll be large assemblies, but they also do workshops with students around poetry writing and sometimes post.
But, but, but Stephen Goldberg, um, who's, who was here for our last Unity Day, uh, from the Holocaust and Human Rights, uh, Education Center, uh, who presented to our high school students on the history, um, of, of symbols of hate, um, has, is going to now come to our middle schools and, uh, present a similar presentation to our fifth and sixth graders and our seventh and eighth graders. He's recently actually, uh, done, uh, his first presentation at a middle school recently. He's really excited to come back. So that will be happening on, uh, April eleventh in person at both middle schools. Uh, then for our K through, uh, four students, we have the Sankofa Drum and Dance Company. If you may remember, if you were at our community, uh, night day in June, uh, they performed here for the community at Greeley, and it's a mix of drumming, uh, songs, dance, and storytelling. Uh, they'll also bring a whole bunch of, I've told hundreds of drums that come with them so the kids can play. And so that's going to be experience that our, uh, elementary schools will have. We are also, last, uh, Unity Day, some of our high school students elected on a field trip to go down to the elementary schools and spend time in the classrooms when, uh, they had an author talk that was online. They loved it. It was a little short, so they're, we're planning on inviting high school students to come down for some book reading also at the, uh, during that time period, uh, for some of the elementary schools. And so it's, I think it's going to be fantastic. Uh, we're lining up all the speakers and putting the schedules together for, uh, with, for our schools, and then we'll be sending information out to parents as we get closer to the date.
Now, we're going to just go over the activities for the rest of the month. Um, so I just want to remind everyone, AJC is conducting focus groups, and so, uh, we've sent out an email asking parents to sign up. Our first one is tomorrow. If you are still interested in attending and you, uh, forgot to sign up or you, you're not sure how to do that, just reach out to us and we'll point you in the right direction. And we, we have a concert on Thursday night, uh, spring sports, registrations beginning. And, um, of course, we have opportunities for CPSE families to start learning about what school is like for our, our incoming kindergarteners. And, um, our next coffee with the board is on February twenty-eighth before our work session. So that is the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Adam, can I go back to the, uh, seventh graders choosing their curriculum, their classes for eighth grade for a second? Um, when the teachers make the, the recommendations, is it based off like a straight grade point average? If you have above this, you got chosen for this or that, or is it much more nuanced than that?
Sorry, it's a bit more nuanced than that. We, we do use, um, some like, uh, performance data to do it. We look at the MAPS scores, and we look at course averages, um, scores on major assessments. But then we, we use that data to create a spreadsheet where we kind of draw a line, and then we use that line to look at students that are above it and below it and to see, like, look at some other, like, maybe I consider them softer skills, like a level of commitment, study, work ethic, um, those kinds of things in, in terms of like, do they have the maturity to kind of double down in the subject area and spend the time? Um, so the teachers make recommendations from that spreadsheet, but they kind of nuance, especially the students that are in that middle section. Um, in some cases, they also will have conversations with students about, you know, kind of a desire to, to take those courses. Because they do, you know, they're, they're, depending on the student, they're, you know, they're challenging courses when you get up into that, like, enriched algebra course.
And then when the parents get their letter in the mail or email, um, saying what class their kids have been recommended for, do we also give them like the tracks for Greeley and show them what would happen at the next step at ninth grade if they choose one or the other? So they can make a really informed decision about which track they want to put their kid on?
Yeah, we certainly could. La, you know, last time we did this last year, we actually had a webinar where we went through all the different pieces. But, um, we have a draft of that letter, but I, it would be very easy to link in, like, the decisions booklet, refer them to the page for both science and uh, math, so they can see kind of the different pathways as they go through.
Yeah, I think that would be great because then people wouldn't be surprised when they get to Greeley, you know, if they had chosen differently, they would have a different path. I think just to give them the information in advance before they make their choice would be helpful.
I have a related question, which has to do with the Regent exams that are part of those two classes, Adam. Are we, what are we doing in terms of recommending taking that exam or delaying it depending on the student's performance? Or, you know, if you go for the extended option, are you looking at taking that? Maybe it's still in ninth grade. I'm sure parents are going to want to factor that in as well.
Yeah, so that, that, it's a good question. So the living environment would end with the living environment regions. Uh, if we run the science eight course, there actually is a science eight exam that students don't have to take if they take living environment as a region's exam. So they kind of opt out, um, of the science eight exam. Students that take the science eight course, if we run that, they would have to take the science eight exam. That counts as a middle school exam, not a high school exam. So those students would then have to go to Greeley, take living environment, take the living environment exam. Um, to, more specifically to your question, for both enriched algebra, algebra and living environment, the course is designed so they end at a place where they're ready to take those regions exams, and they should take them. Um, even if they don't do particularly well in the course, they should take them um, because they get as many bites at that apple as they want to. And what we've done as part of our like grading friendly, as grading friendly as we can be, is if a student repeat, repeats a region's course, you don't have to put both exams on the transcript. You can put the best exam on the transcript. So, for example, if a student takes the algebra regions exam in eighth grade, is not thrilled with their score, they can take it again through, you know, through high school and, and.
But do they need to repeat the course to repeat the exam?
You don't need to repeat the course to repeat the exam.
That's the important thing.
That's right. So, so the, uh, one little nuance to that is the extended algebra course will not be the whole algebra course. It will only be like the first half of the course, a little more complicated than that, but they wouldn't have all the material to take the algebra exam. So we wouldn't recommend that a student take the algebra exam after that extended algebra course. Um, but I know, I know that was like a lot of information, and there's a lot of specific situations with parents and students. Um, and they certainly can reach out to their counselor, their teacher, a middle school administrator, or even me, and we can kind of walk, walk parents through those circumstances.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, that brings us to committee reports.
Okay, so I did attend, um, two committees meetings, um, health and safety. Matt and I were both there. Um, do you want to make a, okay. So all the, um, so we had no health and safety complaints reported to the district clerk. Um, and construction projects, we have no issues to report. And health and safety item projects that are related, um, in our capital projects are air conditioned. in our capital projects are air conditioning, air handling, right, which is going to start in the summer for elementary buildings, right? And then roof repairs, steam pipe repair, playground repairs. Then we move over to Greeley, and then the Greeley Safety Task Force update. We are now looking for somebody to install our license plate reader because we have received all of our items, right? And the sign-in and out application, we're continuing to just working on it in terms of like getting more students to sign themselves in and sign themselves out, whether it's manually or through the badges on their phone, right? We're encouraging that. And we are updating our walkie-talkie and camera system. And the PA system lockdown buttons and lockdown cards update. We are doing a series of tests every day, right? We've done it for now, what, 18 days? And I know some community members can hear it every day. But that will come to an end soon. We just want to make sure that everything is in working order. And now the electronic block updates. All schools, all classrooms have been upgraded and have those as well. Am I missing anything? Okay. Then we have the Facilities Committee meeting, which are similar items. The BOE is going to schedule a walkthrough. We actually, we did schedule a walkthrough, okay, yes. And the capital project updates. We're really waiting to do elementary projects. Our Graflin Roof, Roaring Brook Roof, Graflin Roaring Brook West Orchard Playgrounds, Graflin Roaring Brook West Orchard HVAC and AC. Middle school projects include HVAC and AC and the 7B baseball field. And the high school projects are the roof, HVAC and AC, the auditorium, J-Bridge Storage Building, tennis court lighting, electric panel, fire alarm paving. Those are the next steps. And we're waiting upon state ed for approvals. So nothing can happen until we have the approvals. Anything else?
Anybody else?
Yes, so the Sports Boosters met yesterday. On Friday, I believe, it's June 7th in Mount Kisco. The Captain Lawrence in Mount Kisco is going to be, they're going to be hosting an event that they hope to be an annual event to raise money to support our athletic teams. They are very excited about it. More details to follow, but that is a date to mark on your calendar. It will be June 7th at Captain Lawrence in Mount Kisco, with details to follow. And they're hoping to, as I said, make this an annual tradition to raise money for our athletic teams.
Other committee reports? Okay, I'll just mention briefly that we are, a number of us are going to, I don't know, advocacy Zooms over the next week, which West Putt, the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association organizes for us to be able to interact with our New York State, State Senators and State Assembly members. So a number of us are attending those Zooms to advocate for the district and we'll keep you posted. Okay, so that brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. I just remind anybody that please know personally identifiable information may be used in public comments.
Hi, my name is Scott Breidbart. I've lived in the district now for 36 years, and my kids attended school here. I'm a retired pediatrician and healthcare executive, and I'm speaking because it's come to my attention that the board is considering hiring school resource officers. I just wanted to say that the evidence appears to be that school resource officers are more harmful than beneficial. And I think that we may want to take that into account. I understand that these sorts of decisions are not made based on evidence, but based on emotion. Even so, if one thinks about the Columbine shooting in 99, where 15 people were killed at Columbine High School, they had an armed school resource officer. They also had an armed sheriff's deputy there at the time. So one should not think of school resource officers as being a panacea. The evidence is clear that arrests go up when schools bring in school resource officers, that exclusionary discipline goes up, especially for minorities. And so it's a concern. The Cato Institute, which is a right-wing institute, think tank, you're probably familiar with, not one that I would normally recommend, has done a reasonably good job looking into this issue and coming to the same conclusion. I thought you should know that the community is not monolithic on this.
Good evening. My name is Barrett Flom, and I have a first grader in the district. I wanted to follow up on some clarifications that Alyssa had given about the recommendation letters are going out. I would also suggest that you make clear in the letter that you're not recommending extended algebra or science eight because not everyone listens to all of these board meetings and understands when they're receiving a recommendation letter, that there is no chance that they would receive a recommendation for extended algebra or science eight, and that might impact their decision if they have students that are struggling. If I got a letter and I didn't know, and I was told, "You're recommended to do this," I would think, okay, great, let's do that. But if I had knowledge that no one was being recommended for extended algebra or science eight, I might do additional research. Also, I want to follow up and say that I am grateful that you had the coffee talk today, Hillary and Ryan. I appreciated that and being able to come because I could never get a slot previously in your office hours. So I was thankful that you guys are doing that and, you know, working out the kinks. One of the things I didn't have the opportunity to discuss was the safe storage education materials. I think that it's a shame that we're considering going over the tax cap for three additional armed guards at the schools, but the district isn't even going to send out education materials annually about the safe storage of guns, especially considering that the majority of school shootings happen using guns from homes. So it would be great to remind our families, our community members, if they are gun owners, to store their guns safely and what that means and what that looks like. And I know that the district previously sent it out in 2021. I wasn't a member of the CCSD community then. I know I'm not the only person who wasn't a member of the CCSD community then. So it would be helpful to do that type of education on an annual basis, and that's free, other than time, and wouldn't require going over the tax cap. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us, does anybody want to say anything in response to public comment? That brings us to approvals and ratifications. Can I have a motion, please, for 3.1, which is accepting the minutes of the January 24th of '24 Board of Education meeting? All second? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 3.2 is Policy 4005, the Elementary and Secondary Curriculum Development, second reading. This is a policy that we first looked at at our last meeting.
Right, so we haven't received any feedback on the policy that would require a language adjustment. So unless we receive anything between now and the next meeting, I'm going to have this ready for your adoption consideration. So if there are any comments on this, please be sure you send them to the Board of Education, Ryan or Kaylee, or to me, and I'll, I'll share them with the policy committee.
And just as a reminder, we can, folks, if they want to read them, go on the website associated with the meetings where they're brought up, and you'll find them.
So do we, we still move and, no? Okay. So then 3.3 is Policy 5105, which is our fifth reading of the CCSD Student Clubs Policy.
Yes, so this has some slight addendums to it based on feedback from our attorney and a footnote to describe further district-sponsored clubs versus equal access clubs, and then delineating that there should be no difference between the privileges and resources provided to any student club based on their category. So you can see this online as well. Just a lot of it is consistency in language, and then a footnote just delineating out a little bit further the difference between the two, and then asserting the, that both types of clubs should have the same level of resources and access available to them. This may or may not be up for adoption at the next meeting. It depends on the feedback that comes in between now and the next meeting.
Okay, sure, thanks. That brings us to Policy 3.4, which is Policy 4060, which is outside speakers sponsored by school-affiliated organizations, namely the Chappaqua PTA, the Greeley Sports Boosters, and the Friends of Greeley Theater. So this one is a fifth reading and potential adoption.
Yes, so in this one, we just added, can you, you want to pull this up, David? Since this is up for adoption.
So we, let's move this one before we.
Yeah, sure.
I will move 3.4, which is Policy 4060.
Second.
Okay, okay. So if you look on this, so we've discussed this five times. And so since the last meeting, we just made some real slight changes. So we, we made sure that we categorized that this process would be in place when speakers are presenting to children within the school day. And then if you go down a little bit further to the next, all the way down towards the end, then keep going. Okay, so then we added some language here to just, we moved the, we were, we moved some like, removed some language that was vague, like inappropriate was too vague. And so we added age-appropriate and do not promote any content that is discriminatory. And if you go down a little bit further, you'll see that the recommendation is this policy would be in place for the next school year so that we can work with our partner organizations to get some procedures in place, to be able to implement this effectively starting in September. So those, those are the slight changes that we've made. None of them are really substantial. So I am recommending it for your consideration for adoption tonight. Do any of the board members have any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept the superintendent's recommendations under 4.1 as presented. Second. Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept 4.2 as presented.
Second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda under five. The use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So as a preliminary question, is there anything that anybody wants to remove from the consent agenda? Nope, okay. Then I will move the consent agenda, which is items 5.1 through, 5.12. Can I have a second? Okay, so the, just to go through briefly, these are a number of CSE summaries, which are always included, contracts for provision of services to some of our students, the contracts that Dr. Pease referenced earlier and that Dr. Chriselia referenced earlier, as well as a supplemental MOA with CCT. And that's basically covers it. So any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to six. 6.1 is, I will move 6.1. It's acknowledging a contract already approved by Dr. Ackerman per Board Policy 6085. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
There's nothing under facilities or financials. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, March 6, 2024, at 7:00 PM, which will be the Superintendent Budget Proposal will be here. And Wednesday, March 13th, then, at 7:00 PM, which is our Curriculum, Technology, Special Ed, and Athletics Budget Presentations, also here. In a slight change from what you see on your agenda, can I have a motion, please, to go back into executive session?
Second.
Oh, we need to say, to discuss.
Employment history of particular persons.
Employment history of particular persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to exec, we are not going to take any action or any further anything upon returning. So I hope everybody has a good night.